All right, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Trustees to order on today, January 13th. We have the roll please.
Roll call.
Testing.
Roll call, Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Columbus absent. Trustee Davis Ward. Can you hear me?
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Yeah.
Trustee Schnoal.
Here.
Village President Torepi.
Here.
Also in attendance Barry Lewis, Village Administrator, Steven Rother, Village Council, Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator, Schnoal Smith, Acting Village Clerk. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Village Council's Meeting Act in JSA 10 colon 4 dash 6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board at 76 South Orange Avenue and on the village's website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken.
Thank you. We have one resolution to begin to go into executive session.
Resolution 2014 dash 001, a resolution authorizing executive session at the January 13, 2014 meeting of the Board of Trustees.
And on the agenda for executive session this evening, we have land swap, contract negotiations, an attorney-client privilege, municipal court judge reappointments, personnel matters, PBA and scheduling, contract negotiations and attorney-client privilege, statutory appointments, personnel matters, Rusty Squad building construction, which is a contract negotiation and attorney-client privilege, and village hall renovation in the Spessis, which is a contract, excuse me, negotiation and attorney-client privilege. Do I have a motion? Move?
Second.
Move by Trustee Levinson, second by Trustee Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you. We'll be back here at eight o'clock.
Okay, thank you everybody for coming back. Before we do roll call again, I just want to announce that I don't know if we need to do anything procedurally, just to continue our executive session into after the meeting, we did not finish all the items. Also, three items that we'll discuss after the meeting, because we wanted to come out here and start the meeting on time, are the legislature board appointments, the rest of the squad building, and village hall renovation. Do we need to do anything procedurally to allow the continuation of that?
I believe we won't adjourn, correct Steve? Steve, we will not adjourn the special meeting so that we can go back into executive session?
Uh, I don't think you have to do that.
Because we're not taking any formal action in the...
Yeah, it's not...
There's no...
It's okay.
Yeah, there's no action.
Okay. Can we have the roll please again?
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Column is absent. Trustee Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Levison?
Present.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
Trustee Schnell?
Here.
Village President Torpe?
Here.
Barry Lewis, Village Administrator, Stephen Rother, Village Council, Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator, and myself, Chanel Smith.
Thank you. Could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence? Where is the flag?
Right there, over there in the corner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing. Thank you. I apologize for my nasally voice tonight, but I will try and do my best. We've got a couple announcements. You can't be getting sick already.
Yes.
Just a reminder that if you're interested in volunteering, thank you, for any village committees or anything else, there are some openings, and you can go to our website at southorange.org, and go to community, and then volunteering, and you can see the dropdown list of all the different groups that we have available. Village Hall offices and facilities will be closed on Monday, January 20th, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And SOMA TV, Maplewood and South Orange Public Access Television Station, has a public bulletin board that can be used to post announcements to about special events. The bulletin board plays from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., and 11:00 p.m. to 9:30 a.m., as well as between some different programming. If you're interested in posting to that, and you have an event or announcement that you'd like to get out to the community, you can go to SOMA, S-O-M-A-TV.org/bulletin.php, and you just have to send the announcement in less than 15 words. And if you have anything longer than that, you can email them to joy@joy.ya gid, yagid@gmail.com. Just an announcement, and we'll have a little bit more information on our website as well, but we wanted to let folks know that this is a part of Jafflo, the tree service, has been contracted by PSENG. They're going to be doing a whole bunch of tree trimming around the power lines throughout the village as sort of a proactive safety measure. This was something that, that I think everybody agreed was necessary, and I know PSENG is committed to doing more proactive tree maintenance to prevent some of the outages that can be prevented by, by doing this. So they're going to be around town doing that. We will have a little bit more information on our website about where they'll be doing that, and if you have any questions, where you can find out more information. And just so everybody is aware, one important thing to note, this is at no expense to any of the taxpayers, the residents, and this is something that PSENG does have to pay for. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments. Also, if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak, please come forward. George, I see that you are the first to sign up.
Right there.
If that doesn't work, you can just come up on the stage here.
It's working.
Is it working?
It's working now.
Hello?
There you go.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, ladies and gentlemen. Happy New Year to you all. Hope you all had a good holiday. My topic for discussion is snow and ice removal. First and foremost, I would love to say that the Department of Public Works does an excellent job in removing snow and ice, and the township is very responsible. However, there are many storekeepers throughout the downtown area who refuse to put salt down to avoid possible falls of pedestrians, customers, et cetera. So I believe, or I feel in my opinion, that code enforcement should take a look at these situations because it's homeowners and storekeepers on South Orange Avenue, because once again, I had to approach the manager in the right aid because his sidewalk was like a skating rink. For everybody's information, they do now have a new manager. His name is Joe. So he was polite, but I addressed the situation. I said, Joe, please be advised, you must maintain the store outside because somebody is going to fall. There were many senior citizens being helped along the avenue by passerby's or whoever they may be accompanied by, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. From the right aid down to the avenue of Scotland Road and South Orange Avenue, the storekeepers need to put rock salt at the very least. Also, another offender is the First Presbyterian Church on the, I mean, South Orange Avenue side. On the South Orange Avenue side, it's a thick glaze. They don't remove the ice, they don't remove the snow, and they don't at least put rock salt down. That is my topic for discussion. Thank you and have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing as there are no more members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close public comments. Just a couple of quick things. If anything does come up as far as that goes, thank you for pointing out any places where we may need to remind the store owners to take care of the property there. And that kind of leads into the next thing that I was going to say, which is just a reminder that we've kind of done a soft launch of public stuff, and, George, I'll actually talk about this to you one-on-one, because I think you'll really enjoy being able to use this application to be able to report issues like this directly on your phone, where you can take a picture and send it in to us, and we can put it into workflow. If we have to send it to code enforcement or anywhere else, we can do that right away. So that is public, and you can download it right now. We're going to do a little bit bigger of a push once we've got some of the kinks worked out. So we've got the soft launch. Everything is out there. You can download it. You can go on the website and use it as well. We're getting the requests in, working out some of the issues that come up whenever you launch something new like this, but are really excited about the potential that this brings. So if anybody is interested in checking it out, you can go to the Google Play Store or the iTunes Store, and if you search for SO Connect, you'll find our app, and it has a little bit of other information built into the application as well. And I did also just want to make sure to thank Public Works for their job during the last snowstorm. I get a tremendous amount of positive feedback from our community every time there is a snowstorm about the job that Public Works does, and just wanted to thank them. They worked pretty hard throughout the night to get the roads in great condition for the next day. Okay, we have ordinances for first reading.
Ordinance 24-01, an ordinance to amend section 61-10 of the business chapter, the code of the township of South Orange Village, to further define licensing requirements of certain landscapers who provide services in the village.
Thank you. This is, this came from Public Works Committee? Trustee Clark?
Legal.
Yeah, legal. Okay, so this is just purely, logistically, a housekeeping item?
It's an update to the landscaping ordinance.
I mean, is there anything further worth explaining?
Well, it, all we are doing is covering those landscapers who aren't otherwise licensed by the state so that there's some licensing agency involved.
Okay, thank you. Okay, unless there's any other questions or discussion, have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Trustee Levison.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. We have the roll please.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Column is absent. The board approved ordinance 2014-01 upon first reading. Ordinance 2014-2, an ordinance establishing salary ranges for members of the OPEIU for the years 2014, for the year 2014.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, basically, and I would point out at your, on the dais this evening, you did get an updated one. There was a mistake in a couple of the lines that was noticed, and I know at least one of the trustees saw it as well, but corrected one is there. And this basically, just for 2014, sets the ranges of the salaries, and it's consistent with the existing collective bargaining agreement that was already approved. So we're already contractually obligated to these salaries by the contract, but nevertheless, we need to do it by ordinance, so this handles 2014.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Not have a motion?
Move.
Who said that? Trustee Rosner moved?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Davis Ford. We have the roll please.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column is absent. The board approved ordinance 2014-02 upon first reading.
I move that ordinance 2014-01 and 2014-02 be scheduled for second reading and final passage at the February 10th, 2014 board meeting, and that a public meeting, hearing be held at that time for the reference ordinance. The acting village clerk is authorized to take the necessary actions to publish public notice for such hearing.
Moved by Trustee Davis Ford.
Aye.
Seconded by Trustee Levison. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you. At this time, we can move on to resolutions on our consent agenda.
Resolution 2402, resolution hiring...
Can you move the mic a little closer to your mouth, because I'm in trouble here in your home. Thank you.
Is that better? Okay. Resolution 2, a resolution hiring for DM crossing guards in the South Orange Department of Public Safety Police Force. Resolution 2014-3, resolution hiring a part-time clerk typist in the South Orange Police Department. Resolution 2014-4, resolution authorizing change order number 1 for REVEX contracting corp for construction services for the project known as Road Improvement 2013, various streets, Thorden Street, Brinda Road, Kingsland Terrace, Kingsland Court, and South Ridgewood Road, representing a net decrease of $3,660.90 to the original contract amount. Resolution 2014-5, a resolution hiring a Pilates instructor for the 2014 Winter Recreation Pilates Program in the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Resolution 2014-6, a resolution hiring a full-time laborer in the Department of Public Works. Resolution 2014-7, a resolution appointing Kim Peterson as a member to, a member of the Development Committee. Resolution 2014-8, a resolution appointing trustee Sheena Column, trustee Stephen Schnell, and trustee Mark Rosner as an alternate, as liaisons to the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee. Resolution 2014-9, a resolution appointing Barry Lewis, Village Administrator, as a representative from the Village Administration to the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee. Can you hear me? Resolution 2014-10, a resolution appointing Joyce Strouzer as the Seton Hall University Representative to the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee. Resolution 2014-11, a resolution appointing Kim Peterson as Development Committee Representative to the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee. Resolution 2014-12, a resolution appointing Douglas Sacker as an alternate, as an at-large member to the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee. Resolution 2014-13, a resolution appointing Tracy Frindelli as an at-large member to the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee. Resolution 2014-14, a resolution appointing Michael Baldwin as an at-large member to the Irvington Avenue Advisory Corridor Committee. Resolution 2014-15, a resolution authorizing entry into the First Amendment to the inter-local shared services agreement, Maplewood and South Orange Municipal Violations Bureau and Shared Municipal Court. Resolution 2014-16, a resolution authorizing First Amendment inter-local shared services agreement, Maplewood and South Orange Municipal Violations Bureau and Shared Municipal Court. Resolution 2014-17, a resolution appointing Olivia Lewis as an alternate, as an at-large member to the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Are there any questions on any of the consent agenda items?
Yes, 2014-008. I don't know if you recall several months ago when we were talking about this committee, I said that I had, I had requested to be a member of this committee.
I think I know why.
And so I wanted to know what happened.
I'm not sure. Trustee Column would probably be the best to ask.
Well, I'd like to pull that and ask for some adjustments.
I talked to you about it before. I said that you were going to chair the subcommittee with the Seton Hall, with the Seton Hall part of the committee, the subcommittee, the Seton Hall.
What subcommittee?
This is the Irvington Avenue Committee. I'd spoken to you about it, because I said I also, I originally put it under planning and zoning. I thought I'd be on it, and you said, and I said we were going to be having several different subcommittees, because you said you were most interested in the Seton Hall partnership with the Irvington Avenue Committee. So I thought that's where we left it.
I don't recall that process.
Okay.
Would you like to do anything?
Yeah, I requested to be a part of this, you know, committee. You know, I've been, you know, right from the beginning, and we talked about this several months ago, right here.
Are you suggesting pulling all of the resolutions for the committee, or just this one?
Well...
I think the resolution creating the committee designated the number of spots that were available.
Three trustee positions.
Three trustee.
Two, and one alternate.
Right.
I had to request to be a part of the committee, so however you want to fix that, that's up to you.
It's really up to you. I mean, we, if you'd like to pull it, it's up to you if you want to do that. But if we were to change the formation of the committee, we'd have to go back and redo the resolution that created the committee in the first place.
We can't have more.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Well, you could, it's just that, I mean, all of our committee meetings are open public meetings anyway, but they'd have to all be noticed. Unless one of the other trustees that are appointed are willing to step down, which is something that you guys can discuss.
All right, why don't we pull it in, we can discuss it.
Okay, so you'd like to pull it?
Yeah.
So that means we won't be able to act as...
So I mean, that just means that the committee won't meet, so that's why I asked whether you wanted to pull all the resolutions or just that one?
Well, hey, it was very well-known in a public meeting, and I've been involved, that I wanted to be a part of it, and so it's unacceptable. that, that I wanted to be a part of it, and so it's unacceptable for me to be excluded. So however we can fix this, we can expedite it, I'm willing to do that. But I made it clear in a public meeting several months ago, and I've been involved in some extent, and I said this was of interest, and prior to this for several years regarding that whole, you know, Seton Hall Irvington Avenue thing that I've been involved in. So I'm, I'm willing to do anything to make sure that we don't slow anything down. But I just need some guidance on how we're going to fix it, but it's unacceptable for me to be excluded.
Well, my suggestion would be to reach out to trustee Column and ask about it, unless you at this point want to discuss with either trustee Schnall or trustee Rosner, the two trustees that are appointed in this resolution to the committee that are here tonight, whether they'd be interested in trading with you, and if not. And if you want to pull their resolution, that's fine. I don't think it makes a difference one way or the other. You could still, we could still appoint the rest of the people tonight.
Oh, yeah.
You guys can work out whatever you want to work out.
You can appoint the rest of the people tonight. That has nothing to do with the trustees. That doesn't make sense to hold up everything else. I'm just talking about the part that, that, that assigns the trustees. But everyone else, the individuals and the volunteers, we can move on that.
Okay, so, so we're taking out twenty-fourteen dash zero zero eight?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, comments?
Two, just a point of additional information. Under seventeen, Olivia Louis Chang, is her married name?
Excuse me, thank you.
Chang, please. And under two thousand fourteen dash oh seven, in addition to Kim Peterson, I'd also want to add Elizabeth Kulick, K-U-L-I-N-I-C-K, to the Development Committee.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
So, oh seven, where we're adding Kim Peterson to the Development Committee, there were two names should be in there, Kim and Elizabeth Kulick.
I was only given one name, so that's why.
That's fine, but we want to add a second.
So we're going to amend it to add the second name?
Trustee Schnall, do you want to formally move to amend that resolution?
We have to remove it too, that's what I was going to say, to amend it.
Say again?
You want to remove to twenty-fourteen oh zero zero seven to amend it and add the name to it? I wasn't given.
Whatever's easier. You can either add a new resolution to add Elizabeth, or we can modify that.
Yeah, just make a, just make a motion to amend.
Make a motion to amend, add the second name to it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just can you state the name again for the record?
It's Elizabeth Kulick, K-U-L-I-N-I-C-K.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend twenty-fourteen dash zero zero seven as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's amended.
Excuse me.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to go back to eight again. How about if we go ahead with that and make a statement that we would modify the ordinance that establishes, that establishes the committee and adding a second alternate to the group, being yourself, so we can move this, move the process forward?
Sure.
Okay.
Second name.
So, so the two things that we would have to do to do that would be, one, to amend twenty-fourteen dash zero zero eight, adding that language, and also we'd have to, I guess you could appoint the members to a committee, and then in the next meeting, we would pass another resolution, maybe the number of members.
I'm suggesting leave it as it is, pass it the way it is. The next meeting, amend it to include in another alternate.
Okay, so it's two actions, it's just a different, a different order. All right, there's going to be, have to, one to be amending the actual resolution creating the committee?
Correct.
And the other is the resolution.
We can do that the next time around.
Okay.
Does that fix?
Is that fine with everybody?
Like, opinion from council, is that fixable that way?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so we will not pull twenty-fourteen dash zero zero eight.
Do you think there needs to be an explanation of the two resolutions with Maplewood on the court? Barry?
Why there's two?
No, no, I'm, not why.
Or just generally what?
What they were.
Well, yeah, for the public, this is an amendment, as I think most people are aware, we have had now for, coming on two years, an interlocal services agreement with a shared court in Maplewood. Maplewood houses the court. Recently, Maplewood went through a process and solicited bids, got bids for third-party collection services, and had it approved by the court. When we learned about it, we were interested in getting on to that contract, and this effectuates that. Essentially, what the contract does is, there is a pretty significant balance of outstanding court fines and delinquencies. In just, in our case alone, it's close to three hundred thousand, I think.
Three hundred thousand?
Typically, of people who may have gotten a ticket or something, didn't respond, and may have moved out of state, out of the area, and we really have no effective way of collecting those sums. This is a procedure that's approved by the Administrative Office of the Courts at State of New Jersey. You enter into a contract with a company, the company, as with other debt collectors, has the ability to locate people, whether they be relocated out of state where they live, to commence collection efforts. The way it is structured, the fee that they get is in addition to the fine revenue, so it doesn't come out of our money, and essentially, it's, it would be sort of found money, because other than this avenue, we don't have any real mechanism to collect it. My understanding is Maplewood is, I think, just embarking on it, but certainly in talking with other, the company and some of the references in other towns, it was reflected that they do have a success rate. And again, anything they get is more or less found money for the court, which ultimately then saves us money.
Thanks.
Hey, any other questions? Hey, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move.
Moved by trustee Levison, seconded by trustee Schnall. We have the roll, please.
Roll call, trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Column is absent. The board has approved the consent agenda with the exception of resolution, what's that, twenty-fourteen dash zero zero seven, which is going to be for separate action, which had been, action had been taken.
Hey, so you want to vote on that for separate action?
I'm sorry?
You want to vote on that for separate action now?
No, it was, it was motion by trustee Schnall and seconded by trustee Levison, correct? For two zero zero seven?
Was it?
Two zero one four.
And that was to amend it, which passed?
Well, that was to amend it.
But that already passed, to amend it.
Yes, that already passed, so.
So that, shouldn't that just be included in the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't need to do that separately?
Right.
Okay, we do have resolutions for separate action tonight?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Resolutions for separate action.
Yes. Resolution twenty-fourteen dash zero one eight. It's a resolution of, excuse me. Resolution authorizing temporary appropriations for twenty-fourteen.
Hey, trustee Levison, Mr. Lewis, is there anything that you want to say? This is fairly self-explanatory.
No, just generally, for the public who may not be aware of it, the statute permits us to authorize temporary appropriations in an amount not to exceed twenty-six point two-five percent of the prior year's appropriation overall, which covers the first ninety-day period. This allows us to continue to pay our bills until we get our, our full budget introduced and adopted.
Hey, is there any, are there any questions or comments from the board? Have a motion, please?
Move.
Moved by trustee Levison, seconded by trustee Schnall. We have the roll, please.
Levison, Schnall. Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Column is absent. The board has adopted resolution twenty-fourteen dash eighteen. Resolution twenty-fourteen dash nineteen, a resolution for appropriation transfers pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash fifty-eight.
Thank you, this, this goes with the previous resolution, although this requires a two-thirds vote to pass.
Yeah, and again, this is just for the twenty-thirteen budget. As you approach the end of the year, certain lines and certain accounts, you did a little better than you thought, so you have some extra money. Certain ones, you, you may have expended a little bit more than you thought. So this is a provision, it, it doesn't affect any taxes, it's all within the budget, and the budget that's totally allocated just reallocates it from those accounts where you have a little money to those where you need it.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Motion.
Moved by trustee Schnall.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Rosner. No, trustee Levison?
Trustee Levison?
Did you see this? Whoops.
Thank you.
We have the roll, please.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Column is absent. The board has approved or adopted resolution twenty-fourteen dash nineteen.
Thank you. That's all the business that we have tonight. At this point, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments, if there's anybody who wishes to speak. Okay, seeing as there's no members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close public comments and ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned from our special meeting. At this point, I'd like to call to order our conference agenda meeting for January thirteenth. Can we have the roll again, please?
Yes. One second. Now, just one second, please.
Here.
Trustee Column is absent. Trustee Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Levison?
Present.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
Trustee Schnall?
Here.
Village President Torpe?
Here.
Also present, Barry Lewis, village administrator, Steve Rother, village council, Adam Lerner, deputy village administrator, and myself, Chanel Smith. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash six. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board at seventy-six South Orange Avenue and on the village's website, and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may not be taken.
Thank you. I'm going to be quick tonight, just a couple of quick technology-related updates. One is the website. We're moving along, and this week, we have a meeting with our website designer to go through some of the, basically, we've made example pages to help move all the templates over from all the old, from the web, from the old website to the new website. And we have those done, and then going through our, with our designer to make sure everything works perfectly. So, for example, making sure that all the department pages look the right way in the same way, and have all the information that we need. All the different levels down, there's a tremendous amount of content from the old site that we're trying to reorganize in a better fashion. So still moving along there. Like I mentioned earlier, we've done a soft launch for public stuff. You can download the app from the Google Play Store or the iTunes Store and check it out. If you do have any issues with us with using the app or the service, definitely let us know so that we can improve it. And then when we feel good about having all the different pieces worked out, we'll do a kind of a bigger round of publicity to make sure folks in the community know that this is out there and people can use. Everbridge is, you know, completely installed, and we used it to send a notification out the other week, excuse me, for the winter weather that we had and the snowstorm. It worked pretty well. There were a couple of little issues, and there always are kind of a couple when you use something for the first time, so we're going to work those out with Everbridge, but we are able to use it, and it was a good test run to use that for the first time. One other thing, which we'll talk about a little bit more in the next meeting, which is going to start a program once a month that, after a really great experience that, and I shared with some of you, of speaking to a class at South Mountain Elementary, and just being really kind of inspired by a question that a third-grade girl asked, to create an honorary village president for a day program that once a month would be done in a partnership with each of the schools. We conveniently have nine schools in the school district and nine, nine school months in the year. And the program would be to spotlight a young person from one of the schools. They'll come to the meeting, call the meeting to order, lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and, and/or partake in any other activities like ribbon cuttings or anything like that, that a, that I might do. And so it's an exciting way to kind of get a little bit of what we do out into the community a little bit more, and it's a great way to involve some of the kids. They were all really, really excited to learn a little bit more about civics kind of firsthand, and the students, the students were really, really happy with that, and I was thrilled with the level of interest and actually knowledge that, that they knew about the process. It was really quite impressive, which is not only a testament to them, but a testament to our teachers in our schools, who I think are really doing a great job there. So hopefully, we'll be able to do the first one at the next meeting this month, and be able to do that once a month, to just do something really nice for one of those kids, and hopefully expand our connection to the schools and to our youth in our community a little bit more, and hopefully the parents and, you know, their friends will come out to the meeting, and again, it, just kind of creating more of a bridge for the community, and then hopefully providing a fun experience for the, for the kids as well.
I think trustee Schnall and I will have to recuse our own children for your rapidism.
Yeah, that's right. I'm just glad no one's made a child joke about me yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got to do it first.
Missed my opportunity.
Yeah. But, so, so I'll make it, so I won't be the youngest one at the meeting. So anyway, that's everything that I have. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I will endeavor to be brief, and then I'm always a little torn because I don't want to steal anyone's thunder on their committee report, so certain things I'll, I'll hold off, and if I need to weigh in when we get to that particular committee, I'll do so. First up, I, at the village hall renovation, a couple of things, we're, we're kind of getting back settled in and on track after the holidays and stuff. We were, we will be coordinating now, and I've spoken to Mr. Fritz, our construction manager, and putting together a, to bring him in for a formal presentation. We have, and we have some things we'll be discussing later in executive session, but we are now on track with the abatement contractor. They've installed the temporary electric service that's pending the inspection. We will be meeting with them tomorrow, and, and that process will be underway during which it should, they're to be completed within sixty days. At the same time, we did receive approval from the state for our pre-qualification. You'll recall, we passed regu, certain, they call them regulations, for our pre-qualification project, process for the prime contractor to underdo the historic renovation. Those were approved by the state, so we're in the process of working with Mr. Holtermann's office to get those regulation, those, that request out for pre-qualified contractors. The way the schedule is working out, we will receive those, I believe on February fifth. They will be reviewed by Mr. Holtermann, our architect, who will make a recommendation to the board. At the same time, there are also, those that are proposed for, to be deemed qualified are also, it's got to be reviewed by the state. So depending on how quickly the state turns it around, we would anticipate then the second meeting in February, possibly the first meeting in March, to designate there, there is formal action by the board designating the qualified contractors. At the same time, Mr. Holtermann's office submitted the ninety percent design drawings to the State Historic Preservation Office, and they're submitted to the Save America's Treasure National Park Service grant, both of who have an opportunity to review, and we're awaiting comments on those. Upon receipt of those comments, the plans will be finalized. So in parallel, we'll be prepared to then go out to bid as soon as we have the designated qualified contractors and go through that process. So it is, projects, it, we had a couple delays associated with the asbestos contractor, but I, I think we're, we're going to get that back on track. And again, as it noted, we're meeting with them tomorrow, and we'll be resuming our regular project meetings, and we will coordinate to have the construction manager and possibly the architect as well in for a full presentation to the board. If not at the next meeting, that's certainly the first meeting in February. The Third and Valley project is moving along as well. Jonathan Rose, we, we have weekly conference calls. Their process is moving. They've been working with our, the building department. The state has some review authority over certain of the plans. They are hoping to be breaking ground as early as February. We're in the process of finalizing the interim relocation, location for the rescue squad, and at the, I anticipate at the next meeting, have some documentations and things for approval on that. Spoke with Mr. Cohen today at some length about rescue squad-related issues. of all the various options on the new rescue squad building, the costs, the options. There is a couple of issues that we'll also discuss later in executive session tonight. We did, I also wanted to point out something that we, last week, a sort of a coalition, if you will, has formed that involves the village, the South Orange Village Center Alliance, SOPAC, and then Ed Ayuso, the developer of the gateway is involved as well, surrounding the train station and our desire to hopefully see some improvements in the train station and really timing it around the train station's 100th anniversary in 2016. Last week, trustee Schnall, myself, Ed Ayuso, Matt Glass from SOVCA, and Mark Packer from SOPAC had a very good meeting, I think, with a large contingent of New Jersey Transit folks in, at the transit headquarters. I think it was a very positive and certainly I welcome trustee Schnall's input on this as well, but I think a very positive first step and we're excited about that and hopefully it'll ultimately lead to some, some real tangible, noticeable improvements at the train station.
What's the timeline? What's the timeline? Do you expect to be able to move forward with some of the improvements and?
Well, there are a number of things and some will move quicker than others. Mr. Ayuso and his partners developing the gateway have made a commitment to make certain improvements on, on the wall adjacent to their property, but is nonetheless transit's wall and in the underpass of South Orange Avenue in terms of all that spalled concrete, strip that all down, repair it, patch it all, get it painted. That, we would assume, will move relatively quickly because it doesn't involve any transit money and they were more than happy to give permission for that since he was willing to pay for it himself. Some of the other issues, there's an artistic component to it that's a grant application that SOPAC is kind of spearheading for the, what we've come to call the arcade, which is the area, the walkway between here and the train station. That's obviously has a process where you have to apply for the grant if you get the funding and then you implement it. That could take some time. Some of the other things the village is committed to doing relating to some of the lighting and stuff that is our responsibility, again, can move fairly quickly, certainly replacing the lights under the, on South Orange Ave will wait until the structural work is repaired. That should happen relatively quickly. Some of the larger, more long-term issues and those that certainly involve transit and transit funding may take some time, but they've committed to meet with us, to look at us. They'd asked for us to go through and really prioritize what we're looking for and be realistic in our expectations. They are, like everyone else, under budget constraints and particularly so since they had to divert, you know, I think significant portions of their capital funding to sandy-related repairs that they had not anticipated. But, you know, the, our goal is to have a lot of this in place for the 2016 100th anniversary. We kind of felt like that put a finite end at it, but I think certainly there will be improvements that made over time.
Yeah, just, just to add in terms of timing, also, the village alliance has graciously offered to fund the lighting improvements. So they actually, I think it was $10,000 or $12,000 is actually being sponsored by the village alliance. And as Barry said, I mean, that's part of the next steps is to actually look at a prioritized list of these activities with, again, the thing in mind is the centennial. But one of the things that I want to highlight, again, just, you know, village administrator had a, you know, really said it well, but it was really, it felt like a good partnership that they really listened, they were willing to be collaborative.
And that's why I wanted to hear the specifics because it could be just a feel-good meeting, but if there's no timeline and no specifics or no actionables, then it's.
To their credit, actually, you're right, it could have just been a Barney meeting and everybody just would have been happy with each other, but actually they specifically said after the Super Bowl, because they're obviously tied up a great deal, the Super Bowl being in our backyard in less than a month now, they'll be tied up with that. But they specifically said, let's get together in February to meet and discuss this prioritized list of activities so we can put deadlines to it. And as you do know, things don't happen unless there are deadlines, so.
Thank you.
It's a good thing.
Those were the items that I wanted to specifically hit and as I noted, I will, I may fill in and jump in on some of the committee reports.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Rother, do you have anything public?
Yes, I'd like to report some good progress with East Orange Water Commission. The commission finally squared away its contract with the city of Newark for sufficient water to supply East Orange and South Orange, and they also resolved a number of open issues with the DEP so that the village was able to secure a water extension permit for the Valley and Third Project. So that, that really troublesome issue is now off the table. The only other remaining issue that needs to be resolved so that the litigation piece of this can come to an end is the administrative consent order that is outstanding with DEP. There is a draft administrative consent order that is still in the negotiation process, but once that is resolved, our request for equitable relief will be over and the litigation will come to an end, subject only to a motion that we would make to be reimbursed for our council fees. The contract provided that only equitable relief could be litigated, all other disputes had to go to arbitration. So the balance of our contract disputes, of which there are many, are going to now go to arbitration and we have, we're in the process of scheduling a meeting at which both trustees Clark and Levison will be attending to discuss how to approach that, to create the ground rules for the, for the arbitration. But we, we're closer to the end than the beginning at this point.
Mr. Rother or Mr. Lewis, could you just reiterate that we are continuing to monitor, independently in addition to the water commission, we will continue to check water and publish the results?
Yes. Yes. We are, and the results, I think, are current on our website, both for the East Orange Water results and our results through December. As we get results in, we've kind of revamped our protocol because there was a little lapse and some delay, but to make sure that they get posted timely, we will continue to do so. And to that point, obviously, it was critical, they're resolving their issue with Newark because that will then provide them with the water to continue to provide us. I think they're in the process, and I defer to Mr. Rother, of getting approval on their plans to rehabilitate their wells and well fields, you know, and obviously that'll be under DEP scrutiny and approval. And as they do that and can start delivering, you know, clean water from there, you know, that, that just helps the process.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the other matters that I refer to that they're squaring away with DEP had to do with the, the volume of water that they're buying relative to the volume of water that they can secure from their well fields while they rehabilitate their wells. And that, that took some doing, took some engineering analysis and, and DEP is now reasonably satisfied that there's sufficient water and for that reason, we've been able to secure that water extension permit for the project here in town.
Thank you. Trustee Levison?
Yeah, I have a number of items. We have been working on a significant project for our police department where we're in the process of replacing their computer-aided dispatch and record management system. We've had a number of meetings and this past week, we had a meeting with the project manager where he had put together a proposed contract agreement with the vendor and at our next meeting, we should be awarding the vendor enforces a contract for that CAD RMS system. In the process, what we will be doing is to make some modifications at the police department where we will temporarily move our dispatch function into another space where we will test the new CAD RMS system and as well as a new 911 system and run that as both a training class for the police with the new system. And once we find, and it being acceptable, we'll turn it over and implement the system in that space and then go back into the old space that we have, which is somewhat aged and falling apart, rebuild that dispatch center and then migrate back over to the new, to the, the previous space. The project plans are moving forward. There are detailed project plans that are being put together right now. We look for this to be about six months in, in process for us to get this implemented. And it's, it's an excellent IT project for us. In other area, and we mentioned it before, based on a number of issues that we've been having with our implementation of other projects such as the website and 311 system and reverse 911, we had a long discussion about that and what we need to be more aggressively moving forward with staff and we've agreed to include more of the staff participation in getting those projects implemented. Something that maybe Barry, that you can address, and I know that you're going to be putting out a report, and that's the St. Barnabas healthcare system implementation that we put in about a year ago and about the progress that we've made with it. If you.
Just briefly, and this certainly also spans into legal and personnel committee and what you recall, we did a little over a year ago, we went looking and one of the things I encountered when I got here is that there wasn't any sort of one cohesive source for medical issues, both for pre-employment physicals, you know, independent checks when individuals are out sick, workers' compensation claims and essentially employees on a worker's comp claim weren't free to basically pick any doctor that was within the plan, which could be anywhere. And that particular doctor, we didn't know the doctor, they didn't know kind of where we sat, where our job descriptions were with sick. We didn't have any consistency in utilizing and exercising our contractual rights in many instances after three days or to send for independent exams. So to do that, we identified and entered into a relationship with St. Barnabas Corporate Health and it is, I think, beginning to pay dividends. I will be compiling and I'm still waiting on some of the statistics, but one of the things I can report, that we recently got the information from our risk manager, relates to our workers' compensation claims experience. By way of example, in 2011, we, our total lost workdays for workers' compensation claims was, it worked out, was 597 days total across the organization and that equated to 2.2 days for every employee. By 2012, of which we had implemented this probably two-thirds of the way into the year, that number had been reduced to 1.7 days per employee and for 2013, we finished the year with, with that number down to 0.38 days per employee. So it's significant. All total, it represents, I think it's a little over 400 sort of recaptured lost workdays, which is, you know, almost two full-time employees. So it, I think it's, part of it's the program, part of it's, quite frankly, I think a, an awareness of, across the board of the employees that we are being this vigilant and that we are sort of exercising our contractual rights. But overall, I think very successful. I, again, as I say, I'm waiting on some of the final year-end statistics on sick days to compare year over year and I'll, I'll be putting it all together in a report, but that's, that's sort of the interim update.
Sure, thank you. Couple other items. We have been looking at our ECIA loan. That's around $2.5 million. We're looking to now refinance it and the estimate is that we may potentially have a savings of about $70,000 in refinancing that loan. Lastly, we had a further discussion on the CCR proposal for this year's funding. They provided us with what they call their service level agreement. The board, excuse me, the finance committee actually is proposing to transfer that back to the CCR liaisons for their review and for them to come back with a report to the board of trustees. Again, the CCR didn't provide the kind of metrics that we've asked them for the last two years in their service level agreement and I think that needs to be reiterated with them again. That's all. That's all I have.
Trustee Davis Ford?
We last met as a committee on December the 23rd. There are several items that are, involve litigation personnel that we can't talk about because that's in executive session, but we are moving forward on those critical items in a very positive and constructive way. I just wanted to share that. However, what I can talk about is one of the things that, that I think it really bodes well for the village as a whole is a constant investment in our employees and in the culture of the village, really, really seeing it really grow and develop in a very positive way, meaning the culture. And specifically, the participation and the investment in the personal development of all of our village employees. Specifically, we had some customer service training and some additional training and we have going forward in the next, I think this week, tomorrow, several areas of professional development training. And I would like to ask Adam to just share with the rest of the board what those particular classes will be about.
Yeah, so on Thursday, January 16th, we have something for our department heads. We're going to be training them on how to do performance evaluations of all their staff because we've now kind of instituted a new performance evaluation that's a little more detailed, that's going to help each department head manager have a, a good conversation with each staff member that they have. On the 17th, we are going to be doing kind of an all-employee workshop. That's going to be the conference or conflict resolution and high-quality connections. And then February 11th, we'll be doing a, managing a diverse workforce. And so, you know, we're really lucky to have, to be able to host these workshops, so.
And the content is coming from?
It's, it's coming from Stevens. They have a.
Stevens Institute, right?
Yeah, Stevens Institute, that's providing this workshop to us for free, part of a grant. And so it's been a wonderful addition and the trainer, Kathy Reddick, has been fantastic and actually all of our employees have really had a great time with us so far, so it's been very helpful.
Yeah, it's great. And just to weigh in, just to recognize Adam, because Adam has really taken the lead and it was one of the things that I, you know, and it's, it's obviously been significant help to me to have such a capable deputy administrator to hand things off to and to his credit, Stevens didn't find us, he found them and he found the grant opportunity and it's, it really is first-rate quality, professional development and it's free and it doesn't get any better than that, so.
Terrific.
Kudos to Adam.
It really is great. Thanks, Adam.
And so to continue my excitement about the direction we're going in that area, he touched upon the training based on how to give a performance evaluation and understand that it's a tool. I had an opportunity last Friday to sit down with both Barry and Adam and review the new performance evaluation and I'm very, very happy. It's user-friendly, it's clear, concise, it gives an opportunity to talk about expectations, identify particular skill sets appropriate to the, to the position, to give, allow for metrics or measurements on that and to end up with your development plan for the year. So it's an excellent document that will be sent out to all of you just so that you can see exactly what would be, what, what tool is being used. And in addition to the other thing that I'm completely pleased about, I had an opportunity on Friday, sitting with Barry and Adam to review the final, final personnel manual. It's all now completed finally and that will be distributed to all the employees with a sign-off on the document that they received it, that they're clear about the rules of, of an employee, the expectations and any other issues that are important for them to know. And then this document will, going forward, will be available online to the employees or in human resources, which happens to be the deputy administrator's office. So, so in those areas, I, we're really moving towards a very, very professional environment that our dedicated employees deserve.
Thank you.
I have a question. For the, for the performance reviews, are they all going to be done at the same time of the year for everybody? And if so, my experience tells me that to do that process is very time-consuming and so we allocating enough expectations for letting the department heads understand.
Yes, that's what the training is for, so they know how to use it and understand that it's not just something to say yes or no or just to. that it's not just something to say yes or no, or just to get it done, but it's really a tool. And Adam and Barry have worked out a schedule that all of these will be completed by the end of January, and Barry will be doing the evaluations of the directors of the department and like I have in the past. I'll sit and review the results of those for directors only, and then Barry has charged the directors that have it completed also. Barry, did we say January 31st for the employees or February? But this year, we're starting a little bit behind, and the way we're putting in place, everything going forward for 2015 will be completed by January 31st. And another component that's developed through this whole process of working with Barry and Adam, which you'll like, is that the trustees will have a part in the whole goals set for each year. So, in November, Barry and Adam will come to us, will have a meeting set up in November for, and this will be standard for the prior year, where the trustees talk just about what the expectations are in regards to the village employees to meet our mission and responsibilities to the residents in November, and this will be incorporated into the expectations that are communicated to directors, and then the directors communicate to their departments or staff that they're responsible for. So, we really, really spent a whole lot of time looking at this and revisioning, reimagining, and coming up with a strategy and tactics to implement this whole process.
But it's not only, it includes goal-setting, but it's not a once-a-year shot. It is periodic reviews with the supervisor and the employee to go over those goals and see if they're meeting the objectives within the timeframes that were set in the performance evaluation.
Yeah.
In our part and parcel of this, we're also developing more formalized, and certainly those of you who are on the board, not the most recent batch, but there had been monthly department reports, but there were kind of a mishmash of whatever format anybody chose to put them into. This is going to be a much more standardized report form with the ability to attach department-specific statistical reports, whatever. But one of the components of that will be identifying all those annual goals, you know, where have we gone, you know, progress, things that may change. So, it'll be, you know, really an ongoing year, you know, year-long process, develop the goals, again, in conjunction with the priorities that the board sets at the beginning of the year, have clearly established goals, monitor those as we go through the year, and then in the subsequent year, part of the review is to look back. It also will, I think, give us, you know, again, we've talked about merit pay, we've talked about things, you know, start to give us the types of metrics. Some of the things are not really statistically, you know, able to kind of give a score, but at least if you have specific, concrete written goals, and you look back, and did you achieve those goals? And then, lastly, to your point, I think we are certainly, the intent is to do these annually, everybody in January evaluating a full calendar year. There had been some history of them in August and other random times, but, so, and we do believe that realistically and particularly going in future years, when all this is set in place and everybody knows it, and they're, you know, January 1st, they can start doing the evaluations, that there shouldn't be really any impediment to all departments having it been done by the end of January, you know, with possible exception of Public Works, where A, there's a lot, you know, a fairly good number of employees, and weather may kind of preoccupy them, obviously, on a case-by-case basis, if necessary, we could do that, but we're confident that the resources won't get spread too thin and we'll get them done.
And the final thing that I wanted to add, that I thought was very good, I forgot. Part of the tools that were developed is a very simple form that covers the main areas that will be a monthly report that Barry will generate to us. I reviewed that document, and it's user-friendly, meaning for Barry to prepare and for us to read. And of all the categories that are on there, if there's additional information for a particular category on there, it'll be as an attachment. So, if the report that he presents with the narrative under each item is sufficient for you, fine. If you wish to have more information and is more information available regarding that particular category, it will be an attachment that you can explore. But at one glance, you can see what's going on in a particular month and all the key areas that will be or is a concern to us. So, that will be starting at February 1st for January, so, you know, at the first of every month. So, you'll start to see that on a consistent basis.
One other item that, as we discussed, the South Orange Connector, the 3-1-1 system, it has service-level objectives that will be built into it, that if you report a pothole, the pothole should be filled within a certain number of days. That information can then be fed back into a valuation process, and then we can use that as a strong metric, in one, setting service-level objectives, and then seeing or measuring ourselves, how well we're doing against it. So, that's another one of the key items that we're building as part of the infrastructure.
So, I am requesting out of our committee, the Legal and Personnel, that Barry, if you would send a copy of the performance evaluation and a copy of your monthly report, so all the trustees will know exactly what tool is being used for performance evaluation, and also to become familiar with the report that you'll be sending out on a monthly basis.
We'll do that.
If you can shoot that out as soon as possible, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Rosner?
Planning and Zoning Committee will be meeting tomorrow night. Tomorrow night's meeting is mainly to go over the Affordable Housing Regulations with Jeff Serenian, who's our Special Counsel on Affordable Housing, and he'll be at the meeting. I don't know if there's been any update officially from the state to us in the past year, but we still need to review our ordinance and so forth, and Susan Gruhl, the Town Planner, Village Planner, will be with us at all. In addition, we will be having a meeting in some point later this month with the Planning and Zoning Committee, also to go over the Master Plan, RFP, and what elements we want to have in there and what we want to include. I think it was sent to everybody. I got comments back from Trustee Calm, no one else, but we're going to review it at that meeting, which probably held in the fourth week of the month of January, and we'll be going out with that and then sending for RFP so we can get the Master Plan examination done.
Okay, thank you.
I forgot one important thing out of the Legal and Personnel Committee. We are requesting, once a month on our conference agenda, we felt that it is really important to have the department heads here at our meetings so that we have questions, they're here to answer, and we can expedite it. They used to be here, you know, I think at both meetings, I think we only need them for the conference meeting when we're having the discussion, but we discussed in legal, and we are requesting, making a request to start to have them come to our conference agendas, meetings again, so they are available.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that, you know, wasn't at that committee meeting, I know that at least, at least a couple of department heads had said to me that when they used to come, they felt much more, much more in the loop on certain items from what the board had discussed and so forth, and that they actually felt it was helpful, as much as they hated coming to meetings, they still felt that it was helpful to be in the loop on the conference agenda. And there was a time when we did conference agenda before the special meeting, so, you know, if we did conference agenda, they could usually be out of here by 8:30, 9 o'clock. If we continue with doing conference agenda after special meeting, then it goes a little bit later. But I would second that we should have the committee's recommendation that the department head should be at the conference agenda, and I guess they could be excused that there's really nothing on the agenda for them, but I think as a general rule, we should have them, yeah.
So, I'm requesting that we start that, you know, with the next conference agenda meeting.
Okay. Trustee Calm's not here to do public safety.
She did want, she did email a couple things, if I may, on her behalf. She did want me, well, certainly Trustee Levinson's already addressed the CAT RMS progress over at the police headquarters. She wanted me to mention that, and we will have had some discussion in executive session, but we are continuing to work on and negotiate, and hopefully, we'll be meeting again, and I've had some meetings with the PVA on resolving some of the scheduling issues, which is the last sort of major piece remaining from the ICMA report. So, hopefully, we're going to, we hopefully successfully negotiate some issues relating to the schedule to maximize the efficiency and provide even better coverage and a better situation, I believe, for the PVA. So, we're working diligently on that, and hopefully, we can wrap that up, and I think that would then allow us to more or less check off, you know, pretty much all the recommendations in the ICMA report. Trustee Calm asked me to report that we have issued an RFP for radio communications consulting services. As has been discussed before, our radio systems are, one, not particularly cohesive in terms of interoperability, communication with one another. Fire Department has a separate one from Police Department, which has a separate one from the Rescue Squad, and a number of them are old and becoming antiquated. So, in order to do the right, you know, get somebody who knows what they're talking about, we've issued RFP for a radio communications consultant. That'll be received, and we anticipate coming with a recommendation, an award, probably within the next month or so, and they will make recommendations in terms of what we can and should do, including identifying ideally funding sources and grant opportunities. Trustee Calm also asked me to report that we are finalizing and should have issued shortly the RFP for an architectural consultant to look at police headquarters and what can and cannot, come up with recommendations as to what can be done there. Lastly, and I'll report it under public safety, she did mention, and if somebody was going to mention it later under new or old business, she did mention, first night was an event, I guess it was New Year's Eve, that historically had taken place in the town. I think it was born of an opportunity to avoid drunk driving and people out partying, and I didn't have not had the opportunity to experience it, but it was apparently very well-received, well-attended. Unfortunately, last year, it sort of fell by the wayside because some longstanding residents who had volunteered and spearheaded that were not able to continue. So, she has, and I think you all copied on the email, but she did want to put that out there, maybe you weren't, you know, in terms of soliciting, and sort of volunteered to try and reinvigorate that, but was looking, I guess, for some consensus from the board.
And she volunteered to be the liaison.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think, I happen to second, I have experienced it as a parent of a child. It's actually a great alternative for families, so I'll be working with her on that as well. And the key is, is what we need to do, as in several things, is to have enough volunteers because it is run fairly low-budget. We do bring in entertainment that is family-friendly, so to the degree that we can, you know, elicit some volunteers from the village to participate and join in with it, that's really what we need to make it successful.
You know, one of the volunteers is actually sitting in the back of the room, who used to be a volunteer several years ago, Mr. Steve Howell. So, I mean, if he doesn't volunteer again, maybe we can, you can solicit some advice from him on some of the, on some of the way it was handled, but I'm not sure about the budget on it and how it was handled. I, no, I saw what she put in her email, but I'm not sure that's how it was handled and how much money was raised, or if there was any money left over a couple of years ago, where that money is sitting. And this was a joint venture, shared service with Maplewood. So, one year is in South Orange and one year is Maplewood. So, I don't know if someone's going to reach out to Maplewood, or if this is, you're talking about doing this on our own, or doing this, continuing this as a shared service.
Well, I mean, where I experienced it was at Columbia High School, which is, you know, even though it's in Maplewood, it's right in the middle, and it's really, it's an ideal location as long as the school will allow it, but that's really the ideal place because of the multiple locations.
And one final note from Trustee Calm, again, in her absence, and it's not really public safety-related, but I'm not sure where it fits in, but earlier this evening, you appointed a number of volunteer resident members to the Irvington Avenue Committee. She did want me to pass along, I gather there was more interest than there were spots, so that, but that to, A, thank all the people and all the interested residents that applied for to sit on that committee, and also assure them that there will be plenty of opportunities involved. There's a lot of momentum building, a lot of excitement on the project. As part of the project, I think we anticipate, and Trustee Rosner alluded to it, the creation of some subcommittees on various specific issues that'll need additional volunteer members, and we, I think, anticipate also a number of sort of projects and events that we'll do. So, there's plenty of participation to go around. She did want me to make it a point to thank all those who participated in the interview process and who did apply, and we certainly have your names, and we'll keep you in mind and contact you as the need arises.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, on public safety, it's sort of a non-remark, but the fact that there was not a public safety meeting in December, so there isn't really an update to be passed along on that.
Right. And the next meeting is January 28th, 6:30. Trustee Clark?
Yes, so, Public Works and Infrastructure, we did have a somewhat abbreviated meeting in December. The code enforcement officer did give a report, and during that, he said that he was in the process, he'd begun the process of issuing summonses for snow removal on sidewalks, so George may be happy to hear that. He also said that this year, he was trying to start the process of painting requirements, issuing those to those residents that need them in January, so they actually have time to plan these things out before the warm weather season hits and you can't find a painter. Let's see, village hall renovation, this update's old compared to Barry's earlier update. So, moving along, Capitol Road Improvement, Sal Renda did present a plan for Capitol requests for the various roadway projects for the coming year, and this is to be forwarded to the village administrator, so that hopefully happens. We also had a resident who initiated a discussion of bulk pickup. She was interested in having a, returning to a free bulk pickup service, and had done a review of various towns adjacent to us and what they do. It was a mixed bag, some do, some don't. After discussion, the committee continues to feel, though, that the present system of having container days and a fee-based system is preferable to basically a tax fair funded system that pretty much accomplishes the same thing. And the resident is going to pursue a potential neighborhood association-based system as well. Lastly, we did have the beginnings of a discussion on East South Orange Avenue, which, if you recall, Mr. Village President, you had asked for. That was unfortunately brief, but that has also been forwarded to the Transportation Committee, and I'll be following up with Mr. Peterson on that one, and hopefully discussing it again with Sal in our next Public Works meeting, and be able to report back to you with the findings of those two groups. So, that is that for now.
I just have one comment, which I didn't mention before, but we're planning on introducing the first Capitol budget ordinance at the next meeting, which will include the roads, so we can get an early start on them.
Thank you. Trustee Schnau?
Yes, so, the Recreation and Cultural Affairs Committee met. Due to the holidays, we moved up our meeting date a little bit earlier. It was on Tuesday, December 17th. We typically meet the fourth, Thursday of the month, so in January, it'll be January 23rd at 9:30 a.m. The reason I say that is I think, at this point, there's a number of activities which would really warrant, it would be great to have some residents and volunteers join. So, for instance, a couple of things that are going on, Mr. Lewis had talked about the meeting that he and I attended amongst, as well as others, in town at New Jersey Transit. Of course, what happens at these meetings, it's not just the people that go, but there's a number of people behind them, and in particular, I want to call out Sandy Martini, who is the Director of Cultural Affairs, Cultural Arts at the Baird, and she continues to liaise, and it's really nice to see SOFCA, the Village Center Alliance, and SOPAC and others work together for this common goal. In this particular case, it was New Jersey Transit. The other one that's coming up that involves multiple stakeholders, potentially this year, and this is where I'm asking for resident participation, is the street fair. So, this past year and two, we've had them on South Orange Avenue. This coming year, we will not be doing that. In its place, the Village Center Alliance has been working on a big event currently being called Play in South Orange, with a theme around playing. But we also mentioned at the last meeting, an idea that perhaps we can move the street fair over to the Irvington Avenue. fair over to the Irvington Avenue corridor. In order to accomplish that, there's a lot of work that needs to be done ahead of time. So, this would be something that the Irvington Avenue Advisory Committee will be looking at, but it would be nice to have some volunteers as well. Couple of new programs that are coming out on the recreation side, I think, that are of interest, they're always looking to expand the types of programs and activities. In last month, we had, on December 14th, it was actually a wonderful event, Megan Barry Gottesman, who is a resident in town, offered a free Pilates mat class. I believe 49 people enrolled in this class. It was, it was a really nice event, and it was also, in addition to looking at physical fitness, it was in remembrance and honor of, a memorial of the Newtown tragedy that had happened exactly a year ago that day. So, kudos to resident Megan Barry for continuing that program. And actually, Pilates is now being offered at the Baird in the spring session, so you can sign up for that. In addition, there will be a free platform tennis clinic and exhibition that'll be held on, I think it's a Friday, January 31st. Also outside of the Baird, in those outside platform tennis courts. This event is being offered in cooperation with the APTA and Viking as a way of increasing community interest in the sport. The APTA provided a $4,000 grant to the department for the rehabilitation of the Baird courts back in 2012, and the local men's and women's groups will be participating in the event. In addition to those new activities, we're also looking at potentially introducing fencing to school-age children as well. Keep an eye out for that. Lastly, in order to be able to accomplish these programs, we do charge a small amount of user fees for the activities, but there is a process that was established a few years ago to deal with resident children who are in need of assistance to pay for some of these department programs. In the past couple of years, we've been very fortunate that funding was provided by the HK Community Fund. That HKCF is just unfortunately closed shop, and so what we're looking for potentially is another organization that might come in and be willing to serve that same need. So, again, anybody who has ideas, thoughts, sponsorships, foundation grants, anything along those lines, I would be really happy either reach out to me, call me, or email me, or feel free to attend the next rec. meeting, which is, again, Thursday, January 23rd at 9:30.
Thank you. So, I think we have one discussion item that trustee Calm requested that we talk about, which was First Night. If everybody remembers, last year was, or this year was the first in many, many years.
We did it before.
What's that?
We did it before.
What? Everything?
Yeah.
Do we want to move forward with, with trying to find volunteers to do that? Is that the action item there?
I believe the action item she was requesting was just that we prepared a resolution designating, I guess, Sheena as the trustee.
As the liaison.
Liaison.
I'm going to do Sheena and Steve. Because I don't want to do.
Yeah, I'm happy to join for that.
Yeah, that's what I, I obviously had not flipped the page in the agenda, so it was on the agenda, so I brought it up earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't realize that was the action that we did agree to.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing, we'll look at, and as was mentioned, is, and trustee Rosner mentioned, we have to look at how the funding was done in the past, if we would continue with that or find new means to do that.
Well, the other thing is with Maplewood as well.
It's a shared service, which trustee Rosner also said, yeah.
Okay, is there anything else? Have a motion to adjourn?
Wait, there's one thing. And this is good news for those of you who wish to attend, but we've all participated and celebrated him so much here, so if you're not able to make it, that's okay. But our chief marquee, Jeff Marquee, the fire chief that retired, is going to be honored Wednesday, this Wednesday, at 6:30 in the chambers of the Hall of Records, the Freeholders' Chambers, by the Freeholders. So, they're honoring him this Wednesday at 6:30. If your schedule allows you, please join us.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
And just to remind her, adjourning, and we're going to go into.
And back into executive session to discuss.
But no action will be taken, and we will not reconvene into open after the end of it.
That's correct.
I move.
Is it, sir, a second? All in favor?
Aight.
All right.